Could we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Mom?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Mayor Neely?
Here. All join me in the flight suit, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one, with liberty and justice for all.
That was kind of weird to watch that camera move.
This is the time for citizen comments for any topics that are not on the agenda.
Just one?
One coming up?
Yes.
Okay. There's Brian Boyce coming forward.
Yeah, I'm Brian Boyce. Let's see, am I supposed to say my address and all that?
Just the city.
Are you a resident of the city?
I am the resident of the city. And I was calling Brian Vaughn of Metro for another purpose, and at the end of the call, I threw out, you know, they have that big project where they're trying to get together with the Clackamas neighborhood and remove invasives, make a huge project out of it. I said, "Why don't you include Waterboard Park?" And he said, "Why, sure." So, we now have Waterboard Park included on that project for invasive removal, which will get a lot of work done for the city. And I also, well, I think Paul Edgar sent it, but PGE is supporting that project, which is going to be a good thing. So, anyway, a little good news for the city to start your meeting out.
That's great. Thank you.
James Nacita? You're next.
James Nacita, I live on Bluff Street in Oregon City.
You're either the other guy, right?
Yes, I think so. I'm that guy. I'm here tonight to spend a little time raising an issue that I think was discussed only peripherally during the campaign last fall for Measure 3407. And that is the idea of implementing ordinance by this commission for Measure 3407. And specifically, in reference, I passed out a copy of the amendment and an excerpt from a special meeting that was held on the original draft of Measure 3407 back in January 31st, 2011, at a special meeting of the Urban Renewal Commission. There were some concerns expressed during the campaign about uncertainty and the fact that Measure 3407 might cause uncertainty by requiring developers to make investments and then have the possibility that they would go out for a bond and have all those investments spent and then have the bond issuance turned down. However, at that original meeting in January 31st, 2011, when the city attorney Edward Sullivan was explaining the measure, and particularly in a response to a question from Mr. Commissioner Philip Yates, we explained the mechanism and the fact that it was possible, and the ordinance is mentioned in Section B of the Charter Amendment, of the city commission in passing and implementing ordinance and having the flexibility of how the vote requirement gets implemented. And I'd like to read from the quote from this exchange. It says, "Commissioner Yates said, 'Does the language you have drafted allow for a vote on more than an actual bond that is about to be issued? In other words, can there be a global kind of approval for the bonds that are to be issued under the plan, which effectively is to approve the plan, and that is what I'm sort of wondering? Or would this require that every time you floated a bond for a sale or for a facade improvement program, would you need a vote for that bond, a $1 million bond or a half million dollar bond?'" City Attorney Sullivan's response was this, "I anticipate that you are going to authorize the projects in the plan. There will be a plan of financing in it, and that would be the basis for authorizing the bonds. And when you approve the plan, you would give preapproval to bonds as a means of doing the financing." I think that is not the way the default provision operates in the Charter itself, in that to do that more global approval of bonds in advance, as well as probably two, three, four, or five other potential scenarios for implementing the vote requirement, you would have to have that implementing ordinance by this commission. So, I just wanted to raise that issue. I think it would be a good idea to explore it in a work session, maybe have a public hearing on it with some citizen comment. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
When we do our education session that we're going to do with the attorney on how we'll be moving forward with this issue, could we bring this into it? Okay?
With that, no other people are listed. The adoption of agenda, anything to be pulled from the consent agenda?
The one that I asked?
Make your statement.
Oh, okay. I asked that we pull 7C.
Okay, 7C will be pulled for a separate discussion, South End Concept Plan. Okay? With that, we'll go on to our public hearings, proposed amendments to land use appeal process.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, commissioners. Before you tonight is legislative file 12-01, proposed amendments to the land use appeal process specifically addressing Chapter 1750 Oregon Municipal Code. We had put together some amendments. One of those was to have a discussion about the option of having a hearings officer. We did have a work session on that, and the commission determined that they didn't feel that that was necessary at this time, so we've removed that. Realizing that we were going to be bringing this before the city commission in a work session, we held our first planning commission meeting on this, and then we continued it to the next date available after the work session, which would be next, two Mondays from now. So, what we're requesting is that you continue the public hearing until February 20th, 2013. That should allow us adequate time at the planning commission to finish that public hearing concerning the other more housekeeping items, which were addressing how the appeals of a community development director's decision is held and who has standing to be compliant with Oregon revised statutes. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any comments either from the public on this or from? Any questions? We'll be moving to continue the topic, so we're not going to take any action today on this particular topic. Do I hear a motion to continue?
Move to approve.
Move to continue. Sorry.
What is the date?
February 20th.
February 20th.
Can I second it?
Okay.
Wait.
Oops. I'll just withdraw it. I can't move it.
Betty, I got it. Okay. All right, there we go. Now, we're ready.
Okay. All right, unanimous. So, we'll continue on to the, we're pulling items, or we continue on to the South End Concept Plan construction excise tax.
I just wanted to pull that because I didn't, I read through it, but I just wanted a little bit more.
Very good.
Would you like me to give a brief summary and then answer your question? So, we were awarded $292,500 from Metro through their construction excise tax program to do the concept planning for the South End Concept Plan. We work with Metro in finalizing the scope, the budget, and then we enter into an intergovernmental agreement between Metro and Oregon City, and that lays out certain parameters that we need to meet in order to be eligible for the payment of those funds, and then it also sets a schedule when we produce miles, when we hit a milestone and produce a deliverable that then they will then give us.
A draw.
A draw on that. That's correct.
Okay.
And so, this is just authorizing the city manager to enter into that IGA with Metro.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any difference between that and what we did with the Beaver Creek and Park Place Concept Plan?
Nothing. It's the exact same methodology.
Thank you.
So, with that, do we have a motion to approve the construction excise tax? Any kind of agreement?
I move to approve 13-068 South End Concept Plan. I second.
So, moved and seconded. Vote is unanimous. With that, we'll go on to the remainder of the, no, we won't, because we'll just pass the consent agenda?
No, that was just the.
No, we got the rest of the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda. I second.
These are fast. There we go.
Now, with the consent agenda, that will go to communications from the city manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Commissioner Roth has an opportunity in the next few days to discuss the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, which, for those not in the know, is the Blue Heron Site, and Commissioner Smith as well, with Oregon's congressional delegates on their visit to the nation's capital coming up. Is that correct? And Commissioner Roth has asked the staff to prepare some talking points to help guide the discussion, and we're prepared to do that, but in the spirit of our no surprises commitment this weekend, we wanted to make sure that we ran that by the commission and made sure that everyone was comfortable with us moving forward with that preparation and that commissioners could go and, I guess, lobby, sort of, on our behalf. So, you want to say?
Do you want to kind of explain what this is about? We had a retreat, so I don't know, do you want to kind of explain? These are kind of our ground rules that we came up with.
Since we're still on my report, I'll try to do that if you'd like.
Thank you.
This is a laminated card that is on all the commissioners' workstations there, and it includes kind of rules of the road. These are rules identified by the commission on January 11th, 2013, and they have things like on here, like no surprises, listen to each other, listen to all viewpoints with an open mind, do not make final decisions prior to meetings, just sort of some good conduct rules. And I see former Commissioner Nacita grinning out there because I think he was part of our commission when we did this a couple of years ago, and we came up with some ground rules. We didn't put them on the cards, so we think this will actually help everybody remind themselves.
So, everybody just needs to leave me here, so that's fair.
And anyway, we will go forward if everyone's, it does appear there's a consensus for us to go ahead and do this, and so we hope, we wish you well in your effort, and we'll get those talking points to you in the next day or two.
And get us some money for that. No pressure.
We're going to need a budget for expenses.
I think you will.
I'll be fine.
Oh. You can borrow some.
Also, tonight, I want to thank the finance director Wyatt Parno and his staff for producing the comprehensive annual financial report, and you'll notice that the text, the graphics, the cover, and probably even the work product inside have all been taken up a notch. Thank you so much. We appreciate that. This is the official cover, and it's got pictures of some of the projects that have occurred recently in Oregon City that all of you will recognize. And then the commission's copy has an alternate cover in here that features the mayor under a desk during an earthquake drill.
I can't wait to see it.
There's somebody else under the desk with him, but you'll figure out what that's all about.
I would make the point that this was an earthquake drill for staff here. I happened to be there at the time. You might wonder, you might pose yourself the question, if everybody's supposed to be partaking in the drill, who took the picture?
Yes, you might wonder that. I love it. The other table, I love it.
Well, the thing is, we hid under her desk, and there was no room for her.
That's not nice. I think I never thought of that.
And that is the report that Wyatt is going to submit to the Government Finance Officers' Association in competition all across North America for an award. So, we'll keep our fingers crossed for that. Next, we have Eric Wargren of the Engineering Division, who's going to report a little bit on the railroad bridge. You remember, we had a complaint, a concern about that earlier, and we're going to send off a letter, and we've made a contact with the property owners, so.
Thank you, David. I was asked to speak a little bit about the Union Pacific-owned railroad bridge crossing the Clackamas River to Gladstone from Oregon City. And some of the history, this was built for the Portland-Oregon City Streetcar with the Portland Truction Company, and the bridge was abandoned many years ago. It's a steel structure, and both approaches were removed on both sides of the river. There were some concerns about the abutment and then structural integrity questions about the bridge, and Union Pacific performed inspections on the bridge and found no exceptions for its physical stability. Also, they have no plans to perform work on the bridge, structure, or perform any erosion measures near the abutments. And that's all I have right now. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I think I have a question. Have they given any indication of what the architectural support structure is? I mean, what we see seems to be undermined. Is there other support that's under there? Or do they, other than saying, them saying they're not going to do anything about it, do we know what the risk is?
Well, they felt, when we talked to them, they felt like there was a pile supporting the actual foundation. I don't have any verification of that, but they just weren't concerned about the stability after performing the inspections. So, we really don't have a good reason, I guess, to object or disagree with them based on their findings.
I would like to add one other thing, though, particularly for citizens that aren't necessarily comfortable, and that might include some of us with just taking their word for it. The city doesn't have jurisdiction of that property, but I think it would be very compelling to the state, who does have jurisdiction, if they were to hear from people that are concerned about that. So, I would encourage folks, I think there may be a division of Rails and Harbors that does bridge inspections, and they're responsible for that and have expertise, and they're trained to do that. And so, there may be a bit more of an avenue for citizens to go that route rather than just going directly to the railroad.
I would suggest that we perhaps have this as an item at the next commission meeting because, and I will recognize you, Brian, because you pointed this out, so if it's okay, I'll interrupt. Brian Boyce, the Natural Resource Committee was the one that pointed this out, and I obviously raised it.
Sure.
But the thing is, I mean, yes, putting citizens forward is fine, but whether we as commissioners ourselves wish to ask the ODOT to take a look at it.
Well, that can be done a couple of different ways. First of all, we can send, I can send a letter on behalf of the commission to both the railroad and the state, and pointing out that we've received complaints about this bridge and the apparent alerted concerns in the community, and that's sort of the next step that I was going to recommend. Beyond that, the commission can pass a resolution that says we're concerned about it. Not sure that will make much more of a difference, but I think the main thing is to continually report it until, if they hear it from different sources besides us.
I agree.
It probably will make it more compelling.
I agree. So, will you want directions after we have our conversation or not during this report?
I would love to have direction from the commission, if that's what you want.
I'd like to give a little of the background on this. I did notice this. It's undercut about a quarter to a third of the way across. Now, a number of years back, less than 10, it was undercut three quarters of the way, and the railroad at that point said they weren't going to do anything. Somehow, news of all this got to Governor Kitzauer, who's a governor again, and he invoked the emergency powers of the state. They, state, did the repairs and billed the railroad company. So, that's what happened eight, 10 years ago. And I wasn't present for that earlier event, but I know someone who was, and I don't, they never mentioned seeing any pilings when it was undercut three quarters of the way. So, but I can ask at another time, you know, someone that actually, the person that did the reporting back then, you know? So, but right now, you could easily, it's easily five, maybe six feet undercut, and the repairs that were done earlier are completely undermined at this point in time. And so, we got, you know, it looks like a problem to me, and it's all just loose river rock underneath. In fact, people were reaching in there and pulling pieces out, which I have photos of because, you know, there was one huge river rock that they pulled out, you know, from underneath here, and the picture has where it came from and the rock, you know, and there's no other rocks that size there, so it's pretty obvious.
Are you saying that the condition now is worse than it was 10 years ago?
No, no, it was worse 10 years ago. It was three quarters undercut, and right now, it's a quarter to a third undercut. And there needs to be, you know, a more permanent solution than happened last time, by the looks of it. And my fear is if we did have a 96-style flood, that that could collapse or at least settle, you know, if it was completely undercut by heavy current. And like I say, it's just loose river rock. At the time they built it, the river level was much higher, it has down cut substantially since then, and, you know, due to dredging and who knows what all, but, you know, it probably looked pretty good at the time that they installed it, but now it looks really bad.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
We all agreed to give direction to the city manager to contact the state with our concerns about this and perhaps indicate that we had a similar situation at such-and-such time, and in fact, corrective measures were taken.
We'll try to reference that story. If Mr. Boyce has any, Mr. Boyce, if you know anyone who has any documentation from that period when it was?
I can look that up.
We will look too. We will look as well, but if I'm going to send a letter that may actually come under view of the governor, I would love to tell that story that you just told.
Yeah, I'd love it. That's a personal, real life thing. You're a real user, you're writing it out.
Okay, we'll look for some documentation that we have too to back up the story.
My recollection, Nancy, of course, I was probably works director then, in my recollection, that maybe Sharon Zimmerman was the first, was a staff member at that time, was involved in looking at that, and you might be able to contact her as well.
Okay. All right. Next, Nancy Ite has an admin policy, 2-11, revised for annual reports by boards and commissions. The commissioners, you may recall, there was a comment this weekend about a desire to have boards and commissions report on an annual basis, and we happen to have a policy that needed to be revised, but we did have a policy on that, and we're going to redistribute that and encourage that action, but I just want to give Nancy a chance, since she's been so responsive this week. It's been less than a week since that comment was made, and she's already got something for you, so.
That's great. Well, I'm very happy to be the first one to announce that we have a milestone completed. Goal number five, increasing communications with citizens, and that is part of your boards and commissions' responsibilities for citizens to come forward and give a report to the commission about what's going on on their board. And so, we do have a policy, and that's why occasionally you have received these reports from various committees over the years, but we could be doing better, and there could be more reports from the various boards. So, the policy has been in place. We just revised it and kind of updated it a little bit, and it's on your screens if you want to take a look at it. But this will be distributed to all the boards, the staff for the boards and committees to implement. So, whether or not they can do it, you know, right away or, you know, soon, or six months from now, or whatever, whenever they have something to report, then they'll give their report. But just want to let you know that we have a completed milestone.
I have a question. So, if staff is going to get it to the committees, and what I was hinging on is your just last statement, whenever they have something to report, I'd still like a report every year from them, no matter?
Right. Yeah, right. But to implement it, to go to the committees and talk to them and explain, you know, that there is a policy, and we need to put together something that will address work programs, a summary of achievements, upcoming issues, maybe their goals for the years, or any other items of interest. It just takes some time to put that together, so.
Yeah, thank you.
And the last thing on my report, Maureen Cole, our library director, has some events that she'd like to announce.
Hello. So, I just wanted to remind you and the public out there watching that tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, we will be celebrating the William Stafford Birthday Celebration, which is usually a reading by many poets and the public. If you have a favorite William Stafford poem, you can come and bring it and read, so it's just kind of a promotion of poetry and William Stafford poetry in specifically. And then, I would like to also mention that our next first Friday film will be February 1st and at the Pioneer Center, and that's only a couple of weeks away. And the movie for that for February is Capitalism, A Love Story, the Michael Moore movie, which will be facilitated by Bill Waters, who is a business instructor at Clackamas Community College, so it should be very interesting. So, everybody come. What time is it? Tomorrow night is 7:00 at the library, and the movie is 6:30 at the Pioneer Center on Friday, February 1st. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my report, Your Honor.
An item that I wish to report on is one that will be coming up, maybe in the May election. The Metro Regional Government is probably going to place a levy request to the voters within the Metro region. Metro has had success in passing two major bond issues for open space procurement. Both of them were extremely successful. The bonded money was for procurement, not for maintenance of the properties. And as several of us know, there are invasive species in most of these areas, and so they're putting forward a Metro-sponsored levy that will be applied region-wide. Apparently, the taxation on a household won't be very great. The mayors of the region have been kind of concerned because of its potential effect on other levies that we have under the area of compression. Now, there's not that too many jurisdictions that have been affected in a major way by compression at this point, but the amount will not be very great, and I'll report back in that the Mayor John Kovesh of West Lynn will be hosting a meeting between Carlotta Colette, who's our representative to Metro, our counselor to Metro, and she will be meeting with us to talk about the levy and listening to some of the concerns that we have expressed. So, I'll be reporting back on that later. At this point, I don't have any other comments. Any other commissioners have a report?
The only thing I have to say is about the retreat. I think we had an excellent retreat this weekend.
Yes, we sure did.
And got a lot accomplished and headed in, I think, a real positive direction.
I think so, too. I was surprised a little bit by what I call the low citizen involvement.
I know. It's gone through.
I was expecting, we did have some people there, but I think they only totaled about four or five, and some of them were only there for, I think, particular segments of the retreat. And either?
I'll go next.
Commissioner Moon?
On, I want to say Thursday last week, I believe, I missed South Fork Water Board, but I'm sure the mayor or Commissioner Smith will report on that. I went to, and I always say this name wrong, David, can you help me? It's STIP, and it's State Transportation.
Improvement Plan.
Improvement Plans, yes. We put two projects forward for grant monies, and those are being weighed right now. John Lewis gave a great report on those projects, and one was on Main Street and the other was up on Beaver Creek and Malala Avenue, I want to say. And so, that money, if we do get it, won't be available until 2015 or 16, but the problem is there was like 96 projects put forward, and they can only do so much because we have limited funds, of course. And so, other counties will be fighting for the $100 million available, so hopefully we'll get at least one project funded. The C4 people that will be representing us as on the, what is it?
Metro Policy Advisory Committee?
J-PAC, I think.
Oh, J-PAC.
Donna Gordon is the primary from Like Us We Go, and Tim Knapp is from Wiltseville will be the alternative to J-PAC. So, they represent us well, and I think that's all I had, but it was a great retreat that we had. And then, on a personal note, because I do- I do work for Providence, I have to say that Providence, Milwaukee Hospital will no longer give births in the hospital after...
The hospital gives birth?
In the hospital. Thank you, Kathy. I knew you would get that one. After June 30th, all of that will be shut down at Providence, Milwaukee. They will have the opportunity to deliver at Providence, Willamette Falls, or Providence, Portland Medical Center.
And they're not having babies in Milwaukee?
They're not having babies anymore at Milwaukee. They're moving on. The next phase of life. It's not been discussed what the next phase of life may be.
Commissioner Pauling?
Yes, I also enjoyed the commission retreat. It was... I was the newbie there, so it was very nice, because we got a lot accomplished and good energy. The Pioneer Community Center, I just want to say how great that is and what a great service they provide. I was there during their Santa caper, and I had a little hat on and passed out desserts and sparkling cider. Some of the people there, they wanted the champagne. They said, "One year we had champagne," but no, it was cider.
It was cider.
But just what a great service it does and what a great job they do. I have a neighbor that moves specifically to Oregon City because she says we have the best senior center around.
That's true.
And so that was really great to hear that, and it's true. And the reporting on Main Street, the Main Street Board, we have a couple of new people on the board this year, and we also have Ethan Erickson, who is a new employee of Main Street, of the Main Street organization. And he is bringing a different piece to that organization. He's working on communications with businesses, and we had two roundtables. We had one Thursday and Friday of last week. One was a retail roundtable, and one was a restaurant roundtable. And I was very pleased with how many people we had show up, businesses represented from Main Street down there. And it was a time where they could work together, network, share ideas, and be heard, and express any, you know, concerns that they had, and be part of the process. So I think our Main Street Board is going in a positive direction, and that's the news for that.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else from the commission?
There's the new South Fork Board Chair.
Well, yeah. You want to go ahead?
You can go ahead.
No, I said so. You can go ahead.
You're the finest. Our new chair is Mayor Kovash from West Lynn for the South Fork Water Board, and Vice Chair is Mayor Neely from Oregon City.
Everything's fixed. Everything's fixed. We had various things that we had there in our packets, and they already referred to President Kovash, Vice Chair Kovash, and Vice Chair Neely. So it was very difficult to not accept the nomination and the vote.
It's usually, yeah, it's usually the mayor of each city rotating back and forth in terms of the chair position, and then...
We had an exception. When I first came on to South Fork, I had never been... As a mayor, I'd never been on South Fork before. Commissioner Smith had been, and I recommended Commissioner Smith serve as chair because he had experience there and I did not. So I think that was kind of the exception.
Well, I was Vice Chair, though.
You were Vice Chair. Well, in any case, I didn't take that off. That, no other... You're not on anymore, Betty.
Nope, I'm done.
Very good.
Thank you.
Well, that will be adjourned into executive session, in which we will be covering.
No, this is yours, right?
Nancy, can we have these for our diocesan?
Back every time.
You can have it.